Hey Fred.
Yeah?
We're good.
It's Fred.
We're good.
That's three of ya.
This town doesn't move without Fred.
Yeah, right.
Everybody forget that.
Six fifty-nine, we're ready.
So we're gonna, I guess, probably try and have a meeting with that design bill contractor over in, I don't know if he's in Dover or...
What's his name?
Doesn't matter. You would ask me that.
Sorry. You'll figure it out.
Okay.
Very good. Okay. Seven o'clock.
Okay.
You have a manifest?
Yeah.
Yep. Make a motion to approve the July fourteenth manifest.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Yeah, it's just the time sheets. Okay, thank you.
Sylvia, your commission expired in two thousand and eighteen. So we have to, what? We re-nominate you and then you go to the second...
Go to the select man.
Okay. So, I nominate Fred and Bob for the Southern Hampshire Planning Commission.
I'll second that.
What, for your term?
Yeah.
Are you going for it? Okay.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. So we got that squared away.
Okay.
Minutes?
We only have one, one item. Page, page one, last sentence on the bottom of the page.
Excuse me.
Bless you.
Thank you.
And that is to insert, Mr. Judge said his intent is insert two.
Oh, to create, yeah.
To create. And that was all I had.
Excuse me again.
Bless you.
Good thing.
I had a minor comment. Just re-wording suggestion on the second page regarding the vernal pool, seven thirty P M, vernal pool.
Yep.
I just got confused reading that first sentence, whether we need to set it up to a certain size in order to apply. So I was going to suggest that we reword that to whether we need to increase the lot size as needed in order to comply with the one hundred foot setback.
No, we don't want to increase lot size. What we want to do is increase the size of wetland to a certain, which the old one was a quarter acre?
Yeah.
Okay. Cause we can't increase lot size for people who don't have the land. So we have to figure out how to work with the vernal pools, whether they're replicated, moved, and what the setbacks are.
So what does it mean, we need to get it up to a certain size?
Well, prior to the ordinance that was passed a year and a half ago, it used to be a quarter acre.
Mm-hmm.
And now the problem with this is, is that if you have a vernal pool that's only five feet in diameter, you have to now draw a hundred foot setback around the whole thing, which stops people from using their land, okay? Which I think is a little on the extreme side. What we need to do is, you know, most of the time, not most of the time, all the time when somebody comes in, they have to, if it's, get a lot of wetlands on it, they have to flag them for us. So we, we want to be able to make judgments on what, you know, what we're telling people they have to do. Cause this is a, this could be very restrictive in some cases.
Right.
Not all cases, but some cases.
Yeah, I understand the issue regarding the one hundred foot setback, but I'm not certain what you're saying the remedy is, but maybe it's irrelevant.
Well, we need to discuss the remedy.
Yeah.
That's why, that's why, that's why we need to talk about this and not on December thirty-first.
But maybe, maybe the language might end up being, whether we need to set a minimum size for which the hundred foot setback would apply?
I think that would make sense within this...
Would you repeat that? Set a minimum size?
Minimum size for which...
Like a square footage?
Yeah. The hundred foot setback would apply.
Oh.
So on a, so you have forty-two thousand five hundred square feet in an acre. So you're roughly talking, if it's a quarter of an acre, it's like ten thousand square feet.
Hmm, right.
Which is basically a hundred by a hundred.
Right.
I think, you know, I've worked on jobs where, well, we'll take one right here in town. John DeFranzo. When we were over there doing the work, they had flagged a slope at the top and at the bottom, and that was called a vernal pool. But it had a slope going all the way through it, you know, five to ten. But that's where the water ran in seasonal runoff.
Yep.
And what, and what that plan had called for was to, they, to shed, to not have the water shed from the road into that, they, they were calling for like a, about a ten or twelve foot cut across the cul-de-sac to avoid water going there.
Mm-hmm.
Which was really cost prohibitive considering the, his leach field would have been exposed in the slope into the ditch line.
Yep.
Because of the cut. And what we were able to do was bring that up. We didn't fill in the vernal pool, but we were able to build a wall and add guard rail to keep it from, you know, having it to lower the, the grade of the road, which would have caused like a thirty foot vertical drop in a slope that would have probably been about forty-five or sixty feet long.
Yep.
So I think that when you, you, you have somebody, let's just say somebody who already owns a lot and they want to put an addition on their house, and there's a vernal pool that's sixty-five or seventy feet away from the house. And let's say the vernal pool's only twenty-five feet in diameter. So if we take this rule and apply the hundred foot setback to it, let me think, hey, put an addition on their house. Now, I think, I think, you know, we need to be able to work with this somehow, you know, and to just, you know, take this stamp and say, that's it.
That was pretty good.
Say that again.
Try and do it again if you ask me to. So I think that that's why we want to get this up and discuss it now, you know, not tonight obviously, but, you know, as soon as we can get the right people together and go over it.
Send that copy over to Jane. That's the language that I'd worked up previously.
Yeah.
Oh, oh, this is for...
For the, for this particular issue.
Particular subject.
Oh, okay.
Okay.
But this isn't what you want, this is what, this is what...
This is the suggestion.
Recommended changes.
Right, which you had worked up previously.
All right, I'll make copies for everybody then.
Prior to the hundred foot setback, we were at fifty, right? Or was it seventy-five?
No, seventy-five.
It was seventy-five.
Yeah.
So...
Seventy-five and a quarter, and a quarter of an acre.
Right. So I think that we need to have discretion and, you know, cause we can't just mandate, I think that, that, that's what that, the way the setback is right now, it mandates it.
Right.
And I don't think we want to mandate.
Cause I think the, the language that I've got here, and the, these are issues that could be discussed or negotiated with the Conservation Commission, but obviously, obviously the quarter acre, and then the wording I've got is isolated wetlands less than a one-quarter acre in area, the planning board may reduce the wetlands buffer to not less than fifty feet.
Right.
And prior to the consideration, we meet with Conservation Commission and take into consideration a bunch of factors.
Their recommendations.
Yeah. But obviously quarter acre is negotiable, and also the fifty feet is negotiable as well.
And it also depends, you know, whether they want to replicate.
Oh, yeah.
You know, remediation and things like that.
Cause I don't, I don't have that in there, that...
So I think that we probably want to get that in there.
Yep.
Because sometimes that's the way to go.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
You know, move it.
Yeah.
Replace it so that it works.
Right.
You know? And, cause it, you know, with today's equipment, it doesn't take much to do that.
Right, exactly.
You know?
So in the meantime, do you want just the recommendation that Fred's made to...
So, well, basically, Bob, you were just wondering what, what we want to do here, and it's just that the intent of the sentence wasn't clear to me.
I, I understand the issue with the one hundred foot setback not always being, you know, reasonable option, but, but just the way it was worded, I, maybe it's irrelevant because...
Well, except that we're going to have to discuss. I mean, you know, we gotta discuss it.
Oh, yeah.
So this is just, this right hand was just something to bring it up, to say that we need to get it on the agenda so that we can work on this now, because, I mean, August is two weeks, and it's September, and then boom, 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 and here we are, it's, it's December.
Do you want to leave it the way it is then?
Yeah, we can leave it away for right now, because what we need to do is, we need to start working on when we can get a meeting to discuss this.
Right.
Go ahead.
Can I make a suggestion?
Yep, go right ahead.
Sylvia and I were speaking, and we were thinking that it might be a good idea to form, not a subcommittee, but a working group of, which would include a planning board member, Sylvia, myself, and Rick.
Yep.
To go over what Fred wrote up and, you know, work it out. Number one, because we have plenty of, of a budget to do something like that.
Yep.
You know, rather than to continue to kick it down the road.
Yeah, no, we don't want to kick it down the road.
So that's something you guys would be okay with, we can go ahead and set that up.
Yeah, cause that's how we got into that brouhaha last fall.
Why don't I give a copy of this to Cam?
And then, yep.
We don't, like I said, we, we don't want to be trying to, we don't have plenty of time to discuss it. So do we need a motion to approve a working group to...
Well, no, that's already...
She just wanted to do the minutes first, approve the minutes.
Yeah.
You made, Fred's made one correction already.
So do you want to leave it alone the way it is right now for Bob?
Sure.
Okay, so we need a motion then to...
So moved.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Point you have a second.
Second. He seconded and...
Okay, all right. Guess Don isn't coming.
All right, so what we'll do is you guys take a look at it, cause you know where Fred's coming from, you know where I'm coming from, you know where Bob's coming from, we just need to get this thing so we can get people discussing it, and we have plenty of time for the public hearings.
Yeah, I think that's what we'll do, and then we'll make a recommendation to either form a group possibly with a member of the planning board and a member of the Conservation Commission, or to hold a, you know, a meeting and invite the Conservation...
Committee.
Whichever you guys would prefer, but...
Yep. Sounds good to me.
Okay, well, got five minutes or...
So, three minutes or so.
Three minutes, yeah, I know. You don't go by that clock, I know.
That's wishful thinking, Clark. No, actually, it should be ahead twenty minutes.
You're right.
So, yeah, I mean, as far as, I just think we need to be able to be flexible on that. It's, yeah, and I guess as soon as you guys can come up with something, we don't want to waste time.
Yeah.
Because, like I said, we'll be, you know, looking at it like, oh, we're, we're just barely gonna squeeze it in and, and all that, and that didn't work out till last year. Don't want to do that again. Okay. Roscoe, take it away. Or do I need to read anything?
No, you don't need to read, it's continuation.
It's continuation of public hearing for, major subdivision for Range Road of Ed Ward and Sandra Cross. Thank you.
You got that teal working good on the water. That teal moving.
I knew you started that with a big wall.
Do you have any answers that I can take a look at?
I emailed Sylvia when did...
Did I change with you? No, I didn't. Do you think just important? Do you have my email?
I'll give you a call up to it.
Okay, I've got several sheets here, the first one is some slight changes with your additions that you asked for last time, like you want to know how many acreage, how many acres of non-steep and non-weathered open space, so that's right there, which shows all the acreage, just below the North Arrow. Then I kicked the, the private roads up enough so we don't have to share it.
Yeah, so you...
The one on the right, I kicked it in.
You made that, that right away bigger?
Yes.
So that the driveways...
Yeah, yeah. So that's the major thing you'll see on this. And then sheet two is just the, you know, the plan showing, you know, how we get to the normal subdivision. And then sheet three, my engineer drew up road profiles, driveway, driveway profile coming down to two percent. And one of them's the ten percent road, and the other's a seven percent. And then the last sheet shows the site distance, they're all over four hundred feet except that one, one on the left looking normally, it's two hundred and sixty-eight.
So I think you got your sheet three and sheet four backwards.
Yeah. This is, is that three?
Or the num, I guess ignore the numbering.
It's all right. I knew, I knew that this was the line of sight for something, for a Range Road, cause I knew it wasn't a driveway.
Yeah, well, the engineer gave those numbers, but I...
Just damn engineers.
They're just something to go by. Suggestion, they're suggestions.
Suggestions. Yeah, that, that profile on the driveway, that, you know, that, that's pretty much...
Anytime the sand is like, nothing, you look around, driveways.
I know, I got driveways that we had to build at thirteen percent, but that's the town of Milford allowed it because they wanted the subdivision completed, cause it was on the books for thirty years. They wanted it done. It's not, they're not ideal driveways. Most of them we got at like ten percent. There's a couple that are ski jumps. There's plenty of fill on the walks to build them. Now, this, okay, so what I see with the slopes that you have on there, I think you have plenty of there.
And he's gotta propose a ten percent, we could make it nine percent, it, it's just to show that it works.
I think, you know, you certainly don't want to go steeper than ten. That's...
Yeah, I agree with that.
Usually ten is pretty much the max, unless it's just circumstances where it's the way it is, but, you know, there's enough site work in those driveways right there that ten percent will work.
So on the, on the site distance, the shortest one is for the two, the two lots shared roadway.
The lot on the left, I mean, sorry, the road on the left looking to the right downhill, there's a drop off.
Yeah, that one.
Yeah, so that's two hundred and sixty-eight, everything else is like four hundred plus, four hundred, four hundred, it's just that one. And just, that's the neighbor's driveway.
Mm-hmm, okay. So the driveway for the three units would be just about opposite...
Yeah.
The existing driveway for Covetis.
Yeah, yeah, and there was a telephone pole, so we...
Yeah.
Had to do it one way or the other, and the uphill side worked better.
Cause I think we probably want to go and take a look too.
Yeah, so there's another driveway right there. Okay.
But I think the, the greater concern would have been, is for me anyways, is for vehicle coming downhill towards that driveway and making sure we have enough site distance.
Yeah, I mean, it's like...
But the, the one of concern is the coming up the hill towards the driveway.
Yeah.
And I think what we would, what we probably should end up having your engineer do the calculation, the speed limit is thirty-five on Range Road, but to factor in the fact that we have a, we have a slope going up the hill, and what the, and of course, that would be helping with regard to the speed.
Well, no, cause usually people go faster to go up the hill, cause they have to go faster.
We can't go any faster, well...
I know that.
Can't go any faster than what we have for, for the design of thirty-five.
Right, that's fine. I mean, I mean, the thing is, is I think once you're out there, I mean, this is, you're gonna come down at two percent right here, and then you're gonna go right back up, so when they pull out to the edge of the road, you know, they're, it's funny, I, the other day I'm on Route twenty-seven, and somebody stopped to look to the left, and they're stopped about fifteen feet from Route twenty-seven up by Charming Fair Farms, and there's trees in the way. And I'm, I'm sitting there waiting for them to pull out in front of me, because they've stopped so far away, they couldn't see.
Mm-hmm.
You know, you know, and so I'm always waiting for them to like pull out because they can't see anything, you know, so it depends on how far people pull out too, so it's...
But your, your normal rule is two hundred feet.
Well, that, this is for a single driveway.
Yeah.
So we're...
So I think we're...
Well, I think, I think what I'd like to be, I'd like to be able to see is your engineer showing a calculation that at thirty-five miles an hour and going uphill, the site distance is something less than four hundred.
Well, if we're gonna go out there and take a look at it, you can do this, you can put the center line of the driveway in, you could put that in, and you can mark out that two hundred and sixty-eight feet so we can look down the road and see it.
Yeah.
That would be simple. And then when you, when you're sitting there, you could, you know, definitely want to see it on the ground, cause that makes a difference when, you know, when you're, we're not out there going, I think that's two sixty-eight, you know, but like you said, you want to see it, but that's fine, but if we see it on the ground too, that, that helps.
Oh, yeah, yeah. I think if, for us, we can end up, if the engineer shows his calculations, that the safe stopping distance or safe site distance for thirty-five miles an hour going uphill...
Uphill, oh, yes.
Is...
The braking time.
Right, is less than four hundred feet.
Yeah.
Which I'm sure it's going to be.
Yes. Cause you have gravity working with it, yes.
And for us to make a waiver on this will be a lot easier to be able to say that, rather than just say, okay.
Yeah, no, I agree.
Yeah. The other thing too is I think we need profiles on these two, these two roads.
Well, the profile like these, right here?
Yeah, are these, are these out to the road?
Yes.
Okay, so you already have them?
Yeah. Yeah, he's got them down at two percent and then up.
Okay.
So one is seven, one's ten?
Yes. Yeah, the, the longer one.
These, one is seven, one's ten.
Yeah.
This is probably seven percent, and that's, these are less.
Okay, he says...
So this driveway right here, he starts up...
Four and five.
And... Four and five is this one?
Yeah, the, the bottom one is for the left two lots.
Okay.
So we did ten percent, and that's the steeper. So he did it right up through, up to here.
Okay.
Twenty?
Yep.
From edge pavement to there.
Okay.
And this is seventy percent. And just so you know, the, the trees are already cut way back.
Yeah.
Cause when they, when they did the...
Go across there.
When they did the new telephone poles, they just hacked all those big trees off.
Yeah, well, that time I saw you out there, you were out cut then.
Yeah. No, 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 no. Just, no, the, the trees aren't right on the road like there on the other side, on this side, they already cut it way down.
I think they were out there, when we were out there last year.
Yeah.
Okay, so we got, what, six is seven percent?
Yeah.
Following this profile here, okay. It'd be flatter. Okay, so then I guess we're gonna need, need to have Keach Norstrom take a look at this to get cost of, of building those two up to the, past the hundred foot buffer up to the, to this line.
To the, where the, where the private way begins.
Right. And then we also have the issue with regard to cistern or whatever.
Have you been able to talk to, or fire chief?
So I, I've talked to Matt a couple of times.
Yeah.
You know, and we're communicating on options.
Okay.
And I haven't been able to get ahold of him in the past two weeks, I don't know if he's around or not.
He's not around that much. It's difficult, he's not around that much, yeah.
He's probably pretty busy.
Yeah, but the reality is, is that we are working towards a goal, we're doing something in, in which is an open communication, and the last word for, I'm sure we can work something out.
What's his preference?
So the preference is, or the considerations, is what, what would it take to do, one that would require permitting, okay, which would be dredging the existing wetland area?
Yeah.
Or doing...
A self-contained.
A self-contained hole, or pit, or pond, whatever you want to call it, where we wouldn't have to do permitting, okay?
You probably would have to go with a containment as opposed to a pond, because your problem would be resupply.
Um, by water table.
Well, I understand that, but the, in order to make sure you have X amount of water in there all times of the year, you'd have to be really deep.
We're gonna be, we got a wetland right next to it.
No, I know that.
So we'll, we'll have the bottom way below, the wetland level is the water.
Right, no, I understand that, it's gonna go through the ground.
So we'll just go, and we'll look at it engineered that way, and we're actually in the process of that.
Okay. Cause in order to keep...
Honestly, that's the, that's the easier way, which he's happy with, but I think he still wants to consider what would it take to do...
Into the water?
Into the water. And so him and I have had some discussion back and forth on that.
Only thing is with, with regard to creating a pond, you're gonna have to be able to show us that you're gonna have enough water.
Right.
Even under drought conditions, so...
Yes.
That's, that's why I was saying, you'd have to be really deep.
Yeah. That's, we just look pretty deep.
Oh, I know, I know.
And we, and we know that, in his preference is a pond, whichever way, that's his preference over a cistern.
Okay.
And that's why we're working, we're trying to figure out what would be best.
Well, when you say cistern, we have three things though.
Well, you didn't mean cistern, you meant dug, dig a hole. Dig a big hole or use a pond, those are his preference, one or the other.
Yeah.
That's what he would prefer.
But a cistern is a third option too.
Third that we...
You'd prefer not to, aware of that, but that's...
Well, it depends on how much you wind up spending getting permits to do it.
Will be zero permits if we just dig a hole. And that's what I'm kinda leaning towards.
Oh, no, I, I understand. So like Fred said, if it's got thirty, thirty thousand gallons of water there in the middle of July, well, this year, you'd have no problem.
Yeah, right.
Up until.
Last year, a week and a half ago. Last year was the issue.
Actually, that, last year, as dry as it was.
Yeah.
That thing was still trickling through.
Yeah.
It never stopped trickling.
Yeah.
So therefore, it never dried up.
Right. So once you dig a pond, you gotta remember, you're gonna have to get it a certain, you're gonna have to make sure your slopes on the side are a certain, so that they don't slump in.
Right.
And.
That's the big problem.
Animals can get out.
Well, it's not the animals getting out, they can get out. It's a matter of what, once you dig it.
You don't have to fill up.
Yeah, because what happens is slumps in.
Oh, there's a, the engineer, I designed one for me, and it's the typical, what's expected.
I mean, because sometimes, you know, I've seen them where they've had to like line them to just keep them from slumping.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. Well, we've got the room.
Yeah, we got the room. We do whatever we need to do as far as size goes. There's plenty of room there.
Then once we get that done, your teach will wanna look at the pond for that.
Yeah, right.
So I don't know if you wanted to hold off.
Oh, yeah, we might as well hold off.
Yeah, because. Right, because you guys gotta kind of figure out what you're doing so that you can have a plan Keach can look at. And, um, I mean, I, I know what it's gonna look like, but you still gotta put it on paper.
Right.
I mean, you better dig a hole, that's gonna fill up with water.
If you tried to do it in the next week or so, you better get some big pumps.
Yeah, right.
You know, what we get asked, I, I asked for rain.
Well, we got it.
I didn't ask for that much rain.
Yeah, I know. I, I got it yesterday.
You didn't say how much you were asking for, that was the problem.
Got it more specifically.
That's right.
Yeah.
I was on a Thurston Pond DM today with, that old, the selectman had a walk right there. And it's spilling over in one particular area. There's, the beavers have contributed to.
Oh.
And all that rain has made it that way, so there's a lot of water right now.
See, that was yesterday.
Yeah.
With my job in Manchester. Gold Street flows into the job.
Gold Street.
Yes. But, that's what it looked like today. But, yeah, it's just a matter of, you, once you guys get a, a plan on it and.
I was, I was hoping to have a little bit more information from Matt, but I understand he's really busy. You know, but he had a phone conversation with me after we'd met a couple of months, and he said, I'm sure we can come up with one or the other.
Yeah.
That, that would be his preference. It's just a matter of what one would.
I guess it, it probably comes down to what you guys can get the quickest. You know, whether you wanna try to go get permits to get in there or just dig the big pond.
Well, if, if the dredging filling was, he thinking he'd handle the whole thing or what?
There's, there's a possibility that he might, that he's willing to try to get the permitting done because he thinks it's a more beneficial use.
For, for the town?
Well, we would offer an easement, you can put what you want here.
Well, that.
However long it takes.
That's fine, but you know, that's, that's, that's on, goes on you for time.
Right.
And, and he also, and I understand that too.
Yeah, because, I mean, if you're looking to get going, it's gonna be more expedient for you guys to come up with the pond than it is to, to get permitting.
Right.
And I realize that too, and I think he does too, and that's why him and I have been conversing about what are our, our other options outside of that.
Okay.
You know, and again, it's just, it's.
Oh, no, I mean, it's, it's completely your decision.
We all think that it would be better to utilize the existing water source that's there, but it's gonna require permitting and different stuff, and that's gonna delay time.
Well, if he's gonna do the permitting and we're not approved till he gets his permitting, uh.
No, that wouldn't be.
That's kind of what they're saying.
That's all I'm saying. The time thing goes on you if you wait for him to get it done.
Right.
My, all I'm saying is you, you can do whatever you want to do. I'm just saying, if you wanted to get going, you're, you're better off to get a, get a hole in, in the ground.
And that was part of our conversation, and him with a question mark, is, is there a way that we could do something contingent on getting his approvals? And not necessarily hold him up. And I believe he was gonna talk to you about that.
It's really not up to me. It's gonna be up to the state, isn't it?
No, no, because you give the, you give the, you allow things to move forward.
The only problem is, is if, for some reason, I'm not saying they would, if they said no, then you have to go back to the alternative. So in order for us to go for something like that, we would probably need some sort of a plan as your backup.
Yes.
So we could say, okay, if you can't get this, this is what we're gonna get.
Right.
And so that was part of our conversation, which was, you know, how could it be funded if it was gonna be a longer time period?
Yeah.
You know, and if it failed, then the funding would be in place to do the alternative.
Yeah, so I mean, for us to give you a go-ahead on that, we'd need to have your dug pond plan so that Keach Nordstrom could review it.
That's right. So you, that's why we're working it.
Okay.
With that, so we have a dug pond plan, and then the sec, and the backup would be that.
Right.
And the funds for that would, I'm assuming would have to be set aside, um, so that you don't have to worry about that.
Well, if you don't build the lots, if you sell them, this would be the biggest thing you have to do, is build the pond. So the pond would have to be, be built before you could sell the lots.
Or bond.
Or bond.
Or bonded.
We're looking at bond or building.
Right.
The driveway still, or the road too.
You know, get, you're gonna have to get X done, you know, these things here done, because then that way, everything's done. And whether you sell the lots now or two years from now, at least all of that's done. Your, your, all your stuff that's vested in, in the lots are lots, and it would be done. That way you wouldn't.
Or the plan is sold as a, as a whole.
Okay, that's fine too.
Yes.
So, but nothing would be, you know, be able to be sold or, or built on until these issues or items would be, you know, in place.
Right.
Or they'd be done contingent at the same time.
Yeah, that's to be expected.
Yeah. Um, then that way, whoever buys it, whoa, whoa, you know.
Surprise.
Yeah. I didn't know that.
One thing, one thing, like you'd see you do with Resco is to move this common area thing, move it out to your, some of your open space here.
Some of the data?
Yeah.
So you can read it?
Yeah, to make it easy to read, just identifying what the area, what the area of steep slopes, what the area of wetlands. And then, and then how that compares to the requirement. I think it's fifty percent, no more than fifty percent can be, can be wetlands or steep slopes. So you, you, obviously you make that, but just to show that calculation over here, it'd be easier to read.
So you're basically kind of waiting on Matt right now.
You know, yes, I guess that is, that's why you don't have a formal plan put in place, because I was waiting to open, hoping to have a particular direction. You know, it didn't happen. Um, but we are talking and I'm gonna just, we're just gonna engineer out the plan for digging a hole. You know, because that's ultimately, that's gonna be the fall back.
Yeah, because you won't be, like I said, you, you, eventually you probably could get that. The question is, is how long will it take to get it? And.
You're saying, if this takes four months for the town to get the dredge filled, you can't do anything for four months? Do you wanna wait four months, six months?
That's not, you don't even have to make that decision tonight.
Right.
Because you still gotta come up with a plan, but that's all I'm saying to you is, is that if you want to get going, you're better off to get this. That's, that's all, that's all I'm saying. I'm not telling you that's what you have to do. It's just a matter of if you want to get going, this is the surefire way.
And I use that, and I, and I know that I'm gonna expend, you know, X amount of dollars to do either one.
Right.
And I'm prepared to do that.
Yeah, no, that's fine. I'm just looking at it.
Trying to give the town the ability to have something better, and that's why I'm trying to be.
No, I understand that.
Keep that as an open option if it can happen.
You know, to be honest, I don't think we, we can require another portion of the, of the town to make application for the applicant.
Well, that would be, we're not required, that, Matt's the one that brought that up to him.
Yeah.
Okay, so.
These were kind of guidance that neither one of us knew what code or couldn't be done.
So if Matt wanted to fire pond, would he have to come to the select board first?
Oh, no, no.
So he could go to the ESXL.
We, the, we, the planning board.
Right.
Can't.
Tell him to go do that.
Right, exactly.
And, and I don't think we're doing that. So what I, all I'm saying is, is if Matt wants to go get a, he can. He can call the state and say, hey, I wanna do this, and then they would obviously come down and if you're involved, the question is, all I was bringing up is, how long is it gonna take you? That's all.
But to be honest.
Yeah.
It's, uh, doesn't make any difference whether it's these guys or Matt.
Right.
The, the wetlands people treat everybody the same.
Oh, no, I know that. I'm just saying, they might not allow it.
Oh, yeah, right.
That's all I'm saying.
Right.
So if you want to wait for them to review all that, and then they come back and say, no, you wasted, could be two months, could be five months, or a year.
So if the fire chief wants to dredge the ponds.
No, he, he wants to, but he's gotta ask. That's all I'm saying.
But, but, but there's a cost to the town. Did, does, do the selectmen have to agree with him that we're gonna spend?
Well, that would come out of his budget.
It would be, well, we'd be expecting it to come from you.
Right, if.
So, so here's the kind of our discussion.
Right.
It might be right, it might not be right, you know, and again, neither, he didn't know and I didn't know. But I plan on digging a hole, and that hole's gonna cost me X amount of dollars.
Right.
I'm more than happy to take that X amount of dollars, give it to Matt to put it to his budget, and he can go ahead and dig a hole in the water that's already there. So in other, you know, so whether that is an option that can even happen, that was the question. Okay, and then second, um, one way I'd be happy to do the digging because I, it's not permitting, and I don't have to worry about anything, and I don't have anybody looking over my shoulder.
Right.
On the other way, I don't want anything to do with doing the digging. You know, I would, I, I, I'll be happy to give them the funds to get that done, but then I would rather have an outside party to get it. Now, this is, that was the question him and I went back and forth on, and his answer was, I think we can do that, but I don't know.
Well, I think we'd have a problem with that because your approval from us is based on this getting done.
Yeah, see, and that was the other question is.
Well, the only way we can approve this is if you give us a plan to show us a dug hole, which has nothing to do with going into the brook.
Right.
Okay, that's the only way we can prove it. If you guys get approval from the state and you want to do that, that's completely up to you, as long as it meets what we're looking for.
Right.
Okay?
Now I can understand that. So if I give you.
But I'm just saying to you.
I understand what you're saying.
From expediency purpose, it's easier to go dig a square hole and get the.
I know it is, I just.
And the problem, the only.
All that water, it's a shame.
I know that, I agree with you. She'd be able to do it, but that's not the way things work unfortunately, but. It's a matter of, like Fred said, it, when it comes into something like this.
Yeah.
Because it's a pretty good sized water, they're gonna be like, hmm, you know, it, it gets pretty involved. You're talking about, you know, booms in the water. And, you know, you could be getting into shoring and all kinds of stuff. It might, it might not be worth it.
So, so with all, listening to all of your input.
Yeah.
We're, we're probably moving in a direction of digging a hole, despite what I think is better.
Well, no, you can find out. I agree with you. I mean, I'm fine with putting the thing in the water too, but it's not, you can't just do that anymore. That's the problem. I mean, all the, all the turbidity will be gone. It, it just goes. But it's a matter of. It took, I, I put a bridge in, in Ospey in two weeks. It took them a year and a half. They already had a culvert in there. The culvert fell apart. And the stuff that we're gonna have to do to put the new one back in is way more than what it was when they put the first one in.
I, I hear what you're saying, and I, and that's why I, I, we're moving towards having the engineer just get the hole drawn out so that we have that all for you.
Because like you said, Roscoe, you're gonna be able to go deep enough.
Just dig deeper.
Because your engineer is probably gonna be asking for these test pits and possibly even boreings to be able to know how deep he's gonna have to go.
The other option is.
Where the water table is, I mean, it's gonna, we're doing it right next to that big wetland.
Mm-hmm.
Is there ledge there? I don't know.
Well. If we dig down three feet, we're in water. That's basically.
Right.
That's the beginning of the water.
We gotta do a test pit for one of your lots, so we can do a pit on it, let's do a pit.
Yeah, so you go over where you're gonna do it. You, you know exactly where you're gonna put it, because you got all the survey information. You can figure it out. I mean, if you have to move it back a little bit, you know.
We have a deep reading machine though, twelve feet, fifteen feet?
Yeah, probably twelve, fifteen feet.
We'll go twelve, fifteen feet. I mean, I, I just don't see it being ledgy, but.
Well, you never know.
Yeah, you gotta, you gotta test it.
We might, we might be lucky. It might be the only sand in Deerfield.
No, there's, there's sand in Deerfield.
Not a lot left.
Actually, the bottom.
Yeah, but there's some.
Oh, yeah.
At the bottom of that wet, that wet area, it was crystal clear this past spring.
Yeah.
We're out there, and it looks like a beautiful sand bottom. There's not even vegetation growing.
Yeah.
So maybe, we'll see.
So, I mean, you can still let Matt ask the question.
Yeah.
You know, I don't, based on what Fred just said, he happens to work at that place.
No, I'm just dealing with a.
Fire ponds probably don't take, get any breaks over anything else.
No, I, I had just had a, on a project in Plastow, a pump station for the town's water department. And it took months to get an approval on that, and plus they ended up sending it to the, to the Corps of Engineers for them to check on it as well.
Mm-hmm.
So towns don't get breaks compared to tables. So we're kind of hoping. So now you pique my interest. Is this, how's it do in Plastow with the, the public water system they're trying to put in?
Yep.
I'm, I'm benefiting from that. One of my, my commercial buildings is in.
Oh, is that it? Okay.
And it's part of that cleanup zone thing down.
Yeah, they're gonna probably start the pump station next week.
Yeah.
But that's, that's wet there also, very much so.
Well, then we're gonna just work on with the direction we've already planned on, which is to dig a hole. And then it's my vote, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, and I understand exactly where you're coming from. It's just a matter of, once you start trying to take an excavator and go into the water.
It's not like the old days.
It, it literally has to be a federal emergency.
So they have two choice, if you have two options, they'll want the less.
And basic one.
Touching, and basically.
Probably, yeah.
So, so we're already working.
That's probably what they would look at. They'd go, you're right here.
Why don't you put it there?
Just put it right here.
That's the op, that's what, the direction we're already moving towards, you know. Where I didn't hear back, I finally had to make a decision to do something. So the engineer's already working on doing whatever you need for whatever.
So you could dig a pit down like twenty feet, put a directional boring machine in there and go out into the middle. You'll get all the water you want.
But if you do that until you break through to the bottom of that wetland, and then you've just disturbed the bottom and they won't let you do it.
Right.
No.
Where's full?
Actually, believe it or not, you could take them and go lineal, and if it's perforated, and it doesn't come out of the ground, you'll get all the water you need.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so you're probably gonna work in with a plan for that, and then like this, we're gonna wanna have a walkthrough real.
Yeah.
So.
You wanna do a site walk?
Yeah.
Okay.
So, do you wanna have the pond plan before we do the site walk?
We could show you where the ponds go.
Well, I, I happened to be there one day. We kind of know where it's. I said like, you should probably put it right here, but I'm just saying, if, the more you, you have on the plan.
It would probably be better just.
Because then that way, when we go, yeah, okay, yeah, it's going here, and we know what the plan is, we're good. I mean, I don't think it's gonna take you very long to get it. A plan drawn for a pond.
I just have to twist the engineer's arm. He twists mine, but I have to twist the engineer's.
Tell him you were gonna bring him out and have him do the measuring of the depth, of the test pit. Tell him you are going to bring him out and have him do the measuring of the depth of the test pit. So you basically get a few items. You're going to move some writing over here so we can see that. We're going to check out the line of sight from the one driveway on that two sixty-eight.
Give us the calculation on that.
Yeah.
So you want the calculation that shows how quick can someone stop if they were traveling thirty-five miles an hour uphill? And whether it's fifty feet, seventy feet, thirty feet.
It's going to be more than that, but yeah.
Whatever it is.
Right.
And if it's, if it's two, two hundred and fifty feet, then we can waive the four hundred foot requirement because.
I get that. Now I understand that.
Yeah. So basically, it's, how quick does it stop breaking uphill?
Right.
At thirty-five.
Which.
Which is probably pretty short.
It's pretty short, I would imagine.
And then your pond. I want you to have a plan for the pond and.
Vote on that.
Yeah.
That's it. Can we see it again?
Do I take these back, Roscoe?
Did I have one of them for the file?
Yeah.
Yeah, just as long as I have one for the file, I'll be fine.
Use them again. There you go.
You want to keep that one?
I have written on it, so.
Go ahead. It's yours.
So he has.
Do you want to keep it? Do you have it?
Yeah, I'll move it in your hand. Okay.
Okay.
So you've got to come back.
Four minutes over.
And Cam, you could have Sylvia take a look too and see if she has any comments as well.
Because you said you did email her a copy, correct?
I did, uh, Monday, whenever.
Okay. Okay. So we'll be looking forward to seeing you, and then we'll, as soon as you, uh, get those few things, then we schedule a walkthrough.
So what would be the next?
Yeah, so do you, when do you want to, do you want to see them with a plan, or do you want to wait to?
I just assume get everything scheduled right now, because that helps we put pressure on Roscoe. I had Brown here when we started this project.
I expect two weeks is not going to be enough time.
I don't know if the engineer can have it two weeks in a row. I mean, could try, but if he can't, then just keep it.
Think, because I think a month would be safer.
That would be August eleventh. Uh, so far you've got the compliance meeting with McCarron for that night.
Oh, yeah, okay. That shouldn't, shouldn't be bad.
No.
So we can do seven.
This one and, and that one, and.
That's it.
Okay, seven forty-five continuation.
Yeah.
What, what time is that?
Seven forty-five, August eleventh.
What time we get McCarron scheduled?
Hmm?
What time is?
Seven fifteen, coming in first.
Should be, yeah, half an hour.
So you want to schedule a site walk sometime soon before that day?
So if you, you're pretty sure you'll have everything for your plan?
Yeah, we have a plan.
Okay. So if you want to schedule a site walk prior to the meeting.
That'd be great.
That would be, we could do it the Wednesday before or a weekend. What's best for you?
Probably.
So the seventh is a Saturday. August seventh is a Saturday.
Yeah.
August fourth is a Wednesday.
So August fourth, that might weekend, I might need it.
Oh, come on. How's it, how's it Wednesday during the week we're, oh. I won't be able to make it. I'm going to be in Ospey building the bridge.
Oh.
So.
So that's Saturday then?
Saturday works better. I don't even know if I do it Saturday. It's going to be.
Tuesday or Thursday. I mean, you don't have to do it on a Wednesday.
I'm going to try to make it. That's all I can do. Saturday would be better than Wednesday.
But Saturday's not good for us.
I'm surprised I can't make it.
Yeah.
I mean, it's just a site review, a site view.
Yeah, okay, so Saturday.
Because nothing's going to happen until the meeting anyway.
Yeah, yeah, so that, if that's, if Saturday works better, then pick Saturday.
Okay, what time's Saturday?
Nine o'clock?
Nine AM?
Do you want to? Yeah, I think we can, we'll go for nine.
That, that was the seventh?
The seventh, correct.
Uh, was it the seventh?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, and then the continuation would be the eleventh.
Yeah.
All right, I'll make a motion to, for a continuation to August eleventh at seven forty-five.
Yeah.
And to conduct a site walk on August seventh, Saturday, at nine AM at the site.
Aye, second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. We'll talk to you guys.
And Jane, you can give us a reminder at our next meeting.
Yeah, I'll give a reminder to all to show up.
I just put it on my phone. I'll, I'll forget it.
Oh, yeah, like, the same problem.
All right. Seven fifty-three.
Damn it. Eight minutes off.
Eight minutes.
Okay, there's the, yeah.
Jim? All yours.
Oh, no, you've got to read.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, it's a public hearing.
Public hearing, forgot about that one. Okay. In accordance with the state statutes, you are hereby notified that Deerfield Planning Board will hold a public hearing on Wednesday, July fourteenth, twenty twenty-one, at seven forty-five for a lot application. Lot line adjustment for Norman and Ann Loria, two thirty-four North Road, Deerfield, New Hampshire, for property located on North Road, Deerfield, New Hampshire, identified as tax map four oh five, lot seventy-five, consisting of thirty acres, and seventy-six, consisting of five acres. The intent of the application is to adjust lot lines between lot seventy-five and lot seventy-six. Lot seventy-five would then consist of thirty-one point one zero acres, and lot seventy-six would consist of three point nine acres. You are invited to attend and offer your comments. If you are unable to be there, the board will hear your comments in writing prior to the hearing and read them aloud at the hearing. Okay. That, and pass that way. Yeah.
Couple extras.
Well, if we were on Zoom, they would have heard that.
Yeah, right. All right, so we have a, the dotted line is the existing lot line?
Yes.
Okay. So the intent basically would be to relinquish a portion of lot seventy-six back to lot seventy-five. That's correct?
Yes.
Okay. So one, one point one acres is going back to lot seventy-five. It's really easy.
I'm looking, I have one page, you have.
Oh, you can't do that.
Yeah, so I'm looking, you have two pages. I'm looking at one, and they go, you've got a different plan than I do. Okay, this is just a blown up, exploded plan of what you're doing. I mean.
We put, we made it two sheets so that someone could see the entire perimeter.
No, I just have one. That's why I'm sitting there going, I'm looking at what Fred has, and I'm like. That's fine.
Why don't you get a different one?
I'm going, always left out. You don't know what you're talking about, Pete.
There's sheets one and two here.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, I'd say you're okay.
This, this dates back to nineteen eighty-six. Not, not our application, but this subdivision plan, it's done in nineteen eighty-six. It's in that sort of lot line.
Yeah.
And I, I really don't know. RSL layout design did it, and what the intention was at the time, I'm not sure.
I think it was a fut, future road.
It was, it could be a major subdivision. That's what I was.
Yeah.
In Deerfield?
We have applied for the state subdivision approval because we're reducing the lot below five acres, and I have the application and a copy of the test pits. I don't think they were submitted.
No.
I'm not sure.
No. And you can show, you can give it to Pete. I'll show. Yeah, I didn't get, I don't know if you want to see that.
It's been about two weeks since we submitted it, but, you know, like everyone, we're busy.
Yeah.
Have you got your, haven't got the wetlands scientist stamp on this?
We can add that.
Okay. So far, it's not nice. Two at, two at four feet, one at twenty-seven inches, yeah.
Okay. That's why you guys designed them.
Yeah, right. Now, the four feet define. So water table?
Uh, the first one, water table was no, no water observed at twenty-seven inches. No water observed at forty-eight when they dug, but restrictive at eighteen was this seasonal high water table.
Yeah.
So. Okay.
Hold on to that.
Yeah.
Excuse me.
Pretty basic.
Yeah. So I guess all I can see is just the wetland scientist stamp on there.
Stamp and.
Put the bounds.
Put the bounds in.
Yeah. No, I assume we have no butters.
Is there anybody that's in a butter for this here?
I think so.
Okay.
You're making it too easy, Jim. I see you're making it too easy.
It's my preference, lady.
You have anything, Bob?
Uh, just one minor question. Is there a house on this lot?
On, on lot seventy-six? No.
No, okay.
Conditional approval, get the, the stamp on it?
We'll make a, make a motion to grant conditional approval subject to the, having the wetland scientist stamp on the, on the plan, and a monumentation certification that the three, three granted bounds are, have been set.
And state subdivision approval?
Oh, and state subdivision approval, yeah, too. Thank you, Bob.
So how much time do you need for that, Jim? Thirty days?
No.
Sixty?
Except for the state subdivision approval, I don't know. They're, like everybody, they're swamped with work.
Ninety?
If we can.
Yeah, that's fine.
Ninety days.
And we can always come back in before.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah. Okay, do we get a second, or Bob?
Second.
Okay.
All those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
That was easy.
Um, you want, you want to keep one of these right now?
Yeah, I'd like to keep one of them anyway.
And then give them back. You want the plans back, Jim?
No.
Okay.
They'll give us, they'll give us the complete plates when we. Okay, that's that one.
Jim, you're running out of time.
All right.
Gee.
Okay. Two minutes behind.
Okay, here we go. There's a notice.
Okay.
And these are the.
Yes, he's off to Fred.
In accordance with state statutes, you are hereby notified that the Deerfield Planning Board will hold a public hearing on Wednesday, July fourteenth, twenty twenty-one, at eight PM for an application for a lot line adjustment for Ingrid DeRochers of one forty Mountain Road, Deerfield, New Hampshire, for a property located on Mountain Road, Deerfield, New Hampshire, identified as tax maps, excuse me, tax map, four sixteen lot seventy-five, consisting of twelve point one five acres and seventy-five point one, consisting of twelve point five eight acres. The intent of the application is to adjust the lot lines between seventy-five and seventy-five point one. Lot seventy-five would then consist of nine point two eight acres, and lot seventy-five one would consist of fifteen point five four acres. You are invited to attend and offer your comments. If you are unable to, the board will accept your comments in writing prior to the hearing and read them aloud at the hearing. Okay, Jim?
Thank you. Jim Franklin, Surveyor of Fairness, and the landowner is with me, so we don't need a letter of authorization. This is, uh, we were first before the board in two thousand and nineteen, and we submitted a lot line, or subdivision at that time. And the person who intended to buy lot seventy-five one changed his mind. So there's a new buyer involved, and they wanted to change the lot line to increase it. So I brought, I brought a copy of the, the nineteen, the two thousand and nineteen plan just so that I showed the continuation.
I'll give it to you.
Okay.
And, um, and this plan is just, I just colored this just briefly to show the difference. Got the blue line. This is the existing lot line here that we're going to change over to here.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, that's what this plan shows right there.
Yes.
Okay.
All right, you'll be, you'll be using the stone wall, at least.
Yes.
Okay, great.
Yeah.
Boundary.
Yeah.
That's good.
And that's it. State subdivision approval is not needed for either lot because we're not going to reduce it below five acres.
Yep. So we go from twelve point one five to nine point two eight. And the other one is.
Going to be.
Twelve five eight to fifteen four five acres.
Pretty straightforward.
So what do you know about Adams Hill Road? Is that?
We have in the notes, we've addressed that.
Oh.
That was one of the reasons the first buyer changed his mind.
Mm-hmm.
Um, it's just to the left of the locust plan.
Yep. Remember Charlie Goldblunt?
So. Do you come in from Tandy Road, or do you come in from Mountain Road?
Mountain.
Okay. Because I was looking, I'm looking at this right here.
Yeah, yeah, Tandy's.
It's right there.
Yeah.
Now, do people go up and down that a lot, Tandy Road, through the woods?
Tandy, no.
For Adams Hill?
Yeah.
Some people, not, not.
Not a lot.
I've ridden through Adams Hill on my bike, but that's.
Yeah, that's, yeah.
On bike.
Oh, that's, that's what I meant. Not cars. I meant, you know, like, people walking and that kind of stuff.
Had as much as more.
Too many ticks. Yeah. I'm good.
Yeah, the only, uh, the only thing is the wetland scientist, I guess. Yeah.
Do that, and then put your monumentation on it and.
You need any, Bob?
No.
Okay. Make a motion to grant conditional approval for the lot line adjustment for Ingrid, is it DeRoches?
DeRoches.
Yeah, okay. It didn't mention name of, that's good.
I do. All right, and I, I shouldn't be doing that, because my name gets messed up all the time.
Subject, subject to including a, the wetland scientist stamp and also certification and monumentation being set by Mr. Franklin, which I guess we got one, two, three? Just three, uh, three point, oh, two, two points. Oh, the two be set for the granted bound, or it'll be three? Okay.
Okay.
Do you want ninety days again?
I thought it wouldn't.
Well, no, the other one is because of the state subdivision, that was different.
Right, okay, but this.
This is a matter of you just getting out there and doing your thing, right?
Give you the ninety days anyway, and ca- okay.
Yeah. Yeah, I don't envision any problems, but I didn't last fall either.
Okay. Alright, so Bob seconded it, did he?
Not yet.
Not yet.
I seconded.
Okay.
Okay, all those in favor?
Alright.
Gary?
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Yeah, that was quick.
We're Rosco, so eat your heart out.
I was just gonna ask for your comments. Yeah.
Oh, one question I've got is on the, I've got a question from Mr. Franklin, about the, um, planning board, um, the site visit on, I'm guessing, Rain Road, is that up to the public?
Oh, that's Rosco, that's Rosco, right?
Yeah.
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 Yeah, it's up to.
Yep.
So. Cam, how long do you think it'll take for you to get something rolling on the, uh, vernal pools issue?
Um, well, I think as early as next week, we'll start working on it.
Okay.
And hopefully, we can have something to you by the next meeting.
Okay. So, we, we wanna move on that in September?
Oh, sure.
Like I said, I don't wanna be, you know, the fiasco we had last year.
Yeah.
I, I guess I would think about what you guys wanna do with the conservation, conservation commission, how you wanna involve them, if you would, if you would wanna recommend having a representative of them work on this with us.
Oh, yeah, I think, I think. I think they are going to wanna hold on to the hundred period.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, they are.
And, but we're gonna need to discuss it with them, to hopefully convince them that, uh, in certain instances, circumstances, that hundred is excessive.
Yeah, we just, we've gotta be able to work with people, that's, that's, I don't like telling somebody, sorry, you can't do anything. Or, you know, we gotta, there's gotta be ways to, I mean, obviously, some things you can't get around, and that's the way it is. But some things, I think, that we should be able to work on, and we, we need to have options. And, and, or things to at least give people the option to choose whether or not they wanna do it.
Do you want me to put this on the agenda for the next meeting, for discussion again, or?
Yeah.
Yeah.
You'll have, okay, I'll add that to the agenda.
We should do that.
You know, not, not that my language is perfect at all, and I think.
No, but it's a good starting.
No, no, I think.
And I think your, your point, too, about to have a compensatory, creating it, and another wetland to make up for the one you may just.
Yeah, I mean. You know, people are gonna be able to, to, to make things happen. And, you know, obviously, the more involved it is, the more it's gonna cost. You know, cause, like, like John DeFranzo, when he built his road, he did have to do that.
Mm-hmm.
It was, you know, um, he had to replicate one part of his old driveway, you know, to turn it back. And, you know, it, it wasn't exorbitant, I mean, one of the prices he got for the design was, but the work wasn't. So, um, we need to be able to, we, we've gotta be able to work with people in certain situations, you know, cause, you know, we can't, they, some people, that's all they got. So, obvi- yes, obviously, the conservation commission's gonna be involved, um, you know.
We may not be able to convince them, otherwise, and they'll just go ahead, I don't know.
Well, no, we, we're gonna give, they're gonna be brought in, and we're gonna talk, and we're gonna discuss things, and, but we have to be able to have some latitude to, to help people, you know. Obviously, you know, they, they're gonna have to show what they have.
Mm-hmm.
You know, and we'll go from there.
And as I mentioned earlier, the, the, you know, the quarter of acre is what we had in the past.
Right.
Is that sacrosanct, that we can't touch that? No, no, it's another item for negotiation as well.
Yeah, of course.
You know, and then there's different qualities
Oh, yeah.
of vernal pools.
Right, and that's what, that's what my language in there talks about.
I think that's what. Right, we need to, they need to be, you know, we're gonna have to spend a little money, unfortunately, but to get it mapped out right and take care of it.
So, you may be talking more than just vernal pools, though, too.
Right, it could be, it could be bigger.
Oh, yeah, yeah, I mean, and just, just wet, a wet spot, right?
Right. You know, I think that we need to have some latitude ourselves, if we gotta go do a walkthrough, go look at it, and prioritize it.
Right.
You know, to see, okay, what are we talking about here?
Right.
You know. Obviously, if you're talking to a room this size, and it's got eight feet of water in it, that's not a vernal pool. You know, that's a whole different story.
Mm-hmm.
And I'm sorry, which, your name, sir?
Earl Rhodes.
I'm sorry, Earl, I couldn't tell you, I'm losing my eyesight. Come on up, Frank, why are you hiding in the back?
I love the back.
It's like church.
I, I know that probably be a nightmare.
I'm glad you came. Seriously, I am.
Pleasure to be here. So, you were talking about the, so what you're talking about is now is the, um, amendments to the wetlands regulations that were voted in.
Two years ago.
Right.
Yeah.
So, the problem is, when we were discussing that, I thought I had asked the question about the hundred-foot setback on vernal pools, but I guess somewhere along the line, my fault, didn't pick up on this. This is, that's just way too restrictive, particularly if you own lots of land, and you have five-foot diameter vernal pools in your property. You start drawing hun- hundred-foot setbacks all around those, that really chews up your land usage. And, I'm not saying that we need to just say, oh, the hell with it, and backfill them, I'm just saying that people need to be able to work this out. You know, remediation is one of the ways to do it. And then, you know, some, some vernal pools are obviously maybe more valuable than others.
Right.
What about the time of year, you, you, Gary, you just mentioned wet spots, I mean, time of year, does that make a difference in when you, when you see these things?
Technically, a, a wetland scientist should be able to come in and take a look, and say, okay, this is, this is a seasonal wet area, just by looking at the vegetation. Basically, that's what it's based on.
That's what he doesn't, yeah.
And, uh, so they can identify that, even though it may be, may be dry as it was, uh, a couple of weeks ago.
Yeah, I mean, three weeks ago, you know, you could lay down anywhere, now you can't.
Now you float away.
So.
I, I guess, it seems to me that where you run into hazard, as you're suggesting, is more at the extreme. So when you have a huge area that has lots of small pockets, and it's totally unbuildable because of that, that's one thing. You have plenty of resources to work with. On the other hand, if you have a small lot, and the same thing, um, then you sort of, the percentages don't work out the same way.
Right.
With the two cases.
Right. So, what we're looking at is, is say, if someone of a homeowner came in, and the building inspector looks in his backyard, and there's a vernal pool within a hundred feet of the back corner of the house, and he wants to put a twenty-five by twenty-five addition on his house, he doesn't meet the hundred-foot setback. We need to be able to work with him on that, because Fred, in Fred's writing right here, the minimum that we would wanna go is fifty feet. Okay? But like you said, if somebody has a one-acre lot, and the water's twenty-five feet behind their house, we're gonna have, we're gonna have to go do a walkthrough, and come up with some, a, a good plan, see what we can come up with. You know, if it's a major subdivision, depending on what they're doing, they might just plan on doing remediation right off the bat.
Right.
So, you know, I think it's, we need.
So, so the one-acre problem is, that lot may not be suited for building anywhere.
Well, no, no, I'm going on the assumption that there's already a house there. And this particular thing, because of the new setbacks, even though it's a prior lot, it's still, there's still issues, right?
No.
So if there was a lot before the two thousand six, it's still okay. But even then, it's seventy-five.
Seventy-five, right.
So even then, we'd still have to potentially deal with an issue.
Well, it's seventy-five in a, in a quarter, in a quarter of an acre.
Right.
Yeah.
So, but, it, it just depends on where the house is, and how close it is.
So this ends up being a war on it for next year?
Yes, that's right. Yes. But we wanna get going on it now, so that we have plenty of time to discuss it.
And the, um, master plan, where's that, where's that going?
How we doing, Cam?
Um, I mean, the thing we need to do is, uh.
The problem, or, is, is, is that the money, that's, people don't wanna spend the money.
Well, they voted against spending money.
Right.
Right.
We need to do some sort of.
But that was last year.
So Sylvia wanted to do this, whether it was a public meeting, or, or some sort of outreach campaign, and it was too late, it was too close to, to voting. And she's done this before, I think, in Francis Town or New Boston, and it worked. Holding public meetings, like making videos of, you know, explaining why it's important, and all that stuff, all the things that aren't happening, you know, here. You know, if you're voter, you know nothing about a master plan, you know, it would make sense why you'd be like, now, why do we, why am I gonna?
Go ahead, Earl.
Can I make a suggestion? On Old Home Day, the heritage commission is sponsoring a, a table for our attendees. And Ms. Roberts is involved in sort of outlining, sort of, the, the piece, the leg of walks on the table. But I think all the commissions have been invited to have a presentation, um, at that table. Have you received that at all?
No.
And Planning Board has it, no, Slickman have.
Yeah, Slickman have, no.
Yeah.
But there might be an opportunity to do exactly what Mr. Pullman just, just mentioned, which is, you know, these are the, this is the planning board, because the, planning board's gonna be on the map anyway, because Kelly's putting up a chart of major commission, and how that'll work. Planning commission could well just say, these will be issues for the year, you know, the, the wetland setback issue, the master plan, and be a great way to get more out to people on Old Home Day, right, if it's more than just the, the usual suspects. And, and, and get people aware of, um, you know, what, what's coming up, what's up.
Cause we're, we're on our default budget, and basically, for the planning board as well, and, uh, depending on what our expenditures are, that if we have money left over, towards the end of the year, we can end up entering into a contract with Southern Hampshire to start to.
Right, cause we.
Do initial phase.
Like we decided, or talked about, not decided, but what we had talked about last year, is we gotta pick off pieces at a time.
Yeah, right.
And that's, that's the way it's gonna happen, more than likely in Deerfield, we're gonna be able to go, okay, we can get this.
Does anyone care if money would be eligible for this kind of thing?
Not, not for, no, not if, uh.
Not for master plan, has it been through the planning?
No, for ventilation of the building, and, uh, health-related stuff, yeah, but not, not a master plan.
So, it's, um, it's been hard to work on a master plan, it's, uh.
What's the sanction, I know it's mandated by, by RSA, what's the sanction of the government?
Well, somebody, some, a developer could come in and, and challenge us that we're operating on an old master plan, and, uh, we're, we're not, uh, not operating.
Could be in contempt.
Not operating in good faith, and therefore, try and, try and overturn our regulations as a result.
Well, no, you're a hundred percent right, but unfortunately, I, I don't wanna say that, but more than likely, that could be the only way to make that happen.
No, or, or a, a public education program.
Oh, no.
Yeah.
I agree with what you're saying, but a lot of times, it's, um, and I always fall back to the time that Fred had a meeting for growth management ordinance. It's the only time this room was ever full, okay? He had sixty people in here, and they cared about that. Really, I mean, I, I just, it's the truth, I mean, like I said, I'm glad you're here.
And how did that, well, I'm only wondering, um, how, how did that work out?
Well, look, we didn't get one.
Didn't pass, huh?
Well, we got one because the economy turned south. Yeah. That's what happened, and, and it's just a matter of, um, you know, hate to say it, it's just a lot, it's not a exciting thing, I guess, for a lot of people. I mean, it needs to be done, because.
Box covers.
Oh, excuse me?
Needs some box covers.
Well.
When is Old Home Day, August?
So is it the first weekend, or the second weekend?
It's the second. So it'll be like the fourteenth?
Yeah. So, yeah, I mean, having, I guess the thing would be, is if, if we were gonna have a table, it would need a sign on the back that says, the need for a master plan, and why.
We're, we're putting, we're, we're, we have the tables.
What I mean by that is it, the, if you were, like, the planning board, the need for a planning board, the master plan, and why, an explanation for it. Um, the question is, is how many, what sort of interest is it gonna be drawn, um, on an Old Home Day? That's my question.
Uh, we're, uh, so the, so the, uh, the conservation commission's gonna put up, uh, a number of, I think, a couple of, of displays on, um, trails in town, and some of the benefits of, that they sort of look after, the town boards, that, maybe something like that. I don't know if they're gonna have any handouts, but I suspect they might. Uh, heritage commission is, is sort of sponsoring the whole thing. We all have a bunch of projects that we're working on, that people might be interested in participating in. It's, you know, partly, if, if we get people showing up on Old Home Day, it's a chance for people to say, oh, this is what's going on.
Yeah.
And having, you know, maybe generate some interest. Three people is, you know, three people more in this room would be a hundred percent increase in your attendance.
Oh, yeah.
So, so, and, and, and that would be my, you know, maybe five different views go out to the table, and ten different suggestions, you know. But I mean, the point is, just getting some activity going.
Yep, yep.
It's sort of the idea of that, and so if there's one or two projects that, that the planning board really wants to encourage, or, you know, to put out there for people to know what's happening, or just one sheet that says, these are the three things that are, this is what we do, and this is what's important, you know, that's, um, that's an opportunity.
What do, what do we have on our next meeting?
Next meeting? Stuart is coming in for a subdivision.
Okay.
The twenty, twenty-eighth.
So we have the first August meeting, which is gonna be Ryan Taber.
Yeah, and.
And.
Ed Cross.
Ed Cross is coming back.
But I think, well, the, the, uh.
We wanna discuss.
Old Home Day will be.
After that.
After, you know, before our next meeting.
Well, no, this is the first meeting in July, so we have one more July.
We have a twenty-eighth of July.
I'm just thinking about, do we wanna leave a spot open, just to talk about, look, if we wanna put out some, any, some type of a display?
Yeah, we can, we can put that at the end of the meeting for next week.
Yeah, I've got, so far, I've got, of course, the, uh, vernal pools, we wanna add to the agenda.
Yeah.
And I've got Mr. Rhodes is coming in for a subdivision application.
Just, just that, those two?
Right now, yeah, I, I could have somebody else that just wants to come in.
Okay.
Without a public hearing, that's.
Should give us enough time that.
Yeah, well, I mean, cause, well, obviously, we gotta start talking about.
So what do you wanna, just put on Old, Old Home Day, a discussion?
Yeah, for the, um, master plan.
Right.
Master plan, okay, master plan's.
And whatever else we want to bring up.
Okay.
Do you guys have the ability to, to print a banner-type thing, and?
Yeah, I, I don't know about a big, like, a nice banner, but we can, we have a big plotter, and we've done.
Twenty-four by thirty-six?
Yeah, we've done big displays like that at Old Home Days before, we've done.
Oh, so, okay, I'll put that on the agenda under your.
So we could.
We, I can come up with ideas, too.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Alright, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, just, like, like Errol said, three people is a three hundred percent increase.
Hey, and those people who go to Old Home Days are typically voters, too.
No, no, yeah, I know that. It's just, it depends on, you know, what frame of mind are they in, are they, do they wanna talk politics, or do they wanna just, you know, talk?
So.
They want ice cream.
Right.
Yeah.
So for, for.
I agree.
For Cam, for Cam, uh, food for thought, do we just wanna primarily focus on master plan, and the reasons for?
I mean, we can do a couple, you can do, you know, a, uh, this is the planning board, here are the planning board members, this is what we do.
No, don't put my picture up there.
Okay, no, it doesn't have to be a picture.
It's gonna be a dartboard.
Like, this is what the planning board does, you know, educate people on what the planning board does, why a master plan is important, the last time it was updated.
Yeah, I mean, that, that's the type of stuff, yeah.
That'd be good.
Yeah, you know, you know, maybe, I don't know, do you mention the RSA?
They're not gonna know.
Yeah, I know.
Yeah, yeah.
I agree.
You know, like, you're like, well, if we don't, we get sued, how about that?
Yeah, no, that might...
That might turn them off a little bit.
Turn them off a little bit, yeah, you're right, oh, God.
That'd be good, okay.
Okay, I'll add that to the agenda for the twenty-eighth.
Thank you, that was a good idea.
Okay.
Well, I don't know which hat I'm wearing, but, uh, I wear both of those hats, so.
Well, it's, you know, it's, it's been something that we've been talking about...
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Since I've been here.
Right.
And you've been talking about it longer.
Mm-hmm. All right.
Okay.
Gilson on here, there's a, there's a phone...
It's up to you. Any more questions, Errol? Okay, let go.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Sounds good.
All those in favor?
Aye.
That sounds good.
I'll keep you updated on the discussions of Grand Hills, I'll be in.
Okay, good.
All right, take care. Eight twenty-nine. I got a little behind on schedule tonight. Eight minutes and five.
It suggests that everybody knows I expect to be away on vacation the next, on the next meeting.
So that would be the July...
Twenty-eighth.
Okay.
July twenty-eighth, okay, okay.
And I'll be going to the second meeting in, in August.
In August, okay.
Okay.
All right, well, I'm not going to be here either one, no. The one in, the first one in, uh, in August is going to be questionable, only because we're on a pretty good-sized brook, so, putting a bridge in.
Oh, okay.
Can't just say, ah, it'll be okay till morning. You get one of those thunderstorms in.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. Something, what happened yesterday. We're putting, we're putting the pipeline, so we, it was great up until we had all that rain.
Oh, yeah.
And then it screwed me. The, uh, the, um, so what it is, it's on Gold Street in Manchester, they're putting in a new liquor store, this is Hannover, this is where Enterprise...
New State Liquor Store?
Yeah. Take care. So what they're doing is, um... They're, um, I... So, that's the old enterprise rental sign, that's Gold Street out there, so there's no catch basin that starts... I mean, from here back up to the little snake curve on Gold Street, it's got to be four hundred feet.
Oh, sure.
There's no catch basin that way. And from where I went into the road to the next one down is three hundred feet, so it's like seven hundred feet with no catch basin. And this driveway here is high on one side, and curved, and it gradually goes down like that, while I had reclaimed all the asphalt, so there's nothing there at all. So it all came in, came down the trench, filled the trench full of water. And, uh, this is this morning, we got...